Tom Rupsis, R U P S I S.
And then also your title.
City Council member, Ward 5.
Okay, Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Owen. I, J E N N I F E R Owen. I represent Ward 2 in the Heights.
Okay, perfect. You both can look at me and try not to root by looking at these cameras. Okay, let's dive into the parks bond. I guess, you know, the cost is a big thing. So Tom, we'll start with you. Do you feel like it's too much?
No, I don't think so. I think we've been very conscious about understanding the impact that this is going to be. When it breaks down, $143 million bond breaks down to $52.66 per $100,000 of appraised value on your house. So if you've got a $300,000 house, which is right about the median in billings, that's $157.98 per year. Now, that means half the people in billings will pay more than that, but half the people will pay less. There's some things to understand about that as well, because that $157.98 will phase in over at least three years. So your tax impact this year will be zero, next year about $52.66, which is $13.17 a month, right? So it breaks down pretty easily, and that'll phase in again over three to five years. So think $13 a month next year, or when it gets fully out, $4.39 next year, and a year or two after that, another $4.39, and a year or two after that, another $4.39. Now, for context, I can't take my five-year-old nephew out to McDonald's and get him a Happy Meal for $4.39, right? So this is a, it's a large ask. We live in the world of large numbers. $143 million sounds like a lot, but a couple, 10 years ago, we passed a school levy, $122 million. If they were to do that today, it would be over $160 million. We've passed two public safety levy levies in the last couple of years. That added $11 million on in the first year after that was passed. Over the life of these bonds, that's $220 million over 20 years, and that goes up all the time, right? And it's perpetual, so it doesn't stop. So these bonds stop after 20 years, and they don't go up. They, in fact, they'll go down as the population grows, and more and more people make that bond payment. Whereas our public safety levy levies, they'll be $267 million if we just had a 2% increase in that per year over that same period. We do large projects. We have a $150 million water reservoir project that's in place. We have a $60 million airport project. We have a $75 million water treatment project that we just did. We have, you know, a $40 million city hall. We live in the world of large numbers, and this is pretty typical for where we're at for our size community.
Okay. Jennifer, I want to ask you the same question. I mean, do you think that it's, is it a large amount?
Well, I think we need to be honest about what the amount is. It's not a $143 million bond. It's a $200 million bond at a minimum. $143 million in capital will be raised, but taxpayers will pay $10 to $12 million a year for the next 20 years. That is a significant ask for a very few projects. Overwhelmingly, it's for a rec center. And so while it is true that the city often does large projects, here we're talking about a very narrow set of projects with a, at least, $200 million bill. It's important that we also remember that this proposal that's to the voters in November includes nothing for operations and maintenance, which means this ask in November is ask one of two. So we really need to be clear about what we are talking about. This year, because of property valuations in billings, an average residential homeowner is going to experience about a 22% increase because of property tax increases. So they're already reeling from the compound impacts of property values and inflation, and then we come to them in this city and ask for more money and indicating not just one ask, but two. We also know the public has other significant priorities. Public safety is the number-one issue in this community. We have made some investments, but there will be additional investments needed, and we continue to hear their concerns in the school district, too. We at the city, if we're going to be good leaders, we can't just focus on our own balance sheet. We have to think about the taxpayer, because it's their wallet that is continuing to be dipped into, and there's some real significant needs. So I have concerns, and I think the most essential thing is that we be very transparent about the costs and make sure that voters know what they're voting on in November.
Well, transparency is a great issue. We have been very transparent with the voters. In fact, we passed a resolution, council passed a resolution specifically on this item, something that we think is unprecedented. We've never seen anything like this before. So we know that this is a large set of projects. It's not a narrow set. We've got a large set of projects here that we're doing, and a lot of different partners and a lot of different stakeholders in these efforts, and we want it to be transparent about it. So in something that we've never done before, we passed resolutions including things like we expect there to be a future levy. Whether or not this passes, there's going to be a future levy for parks maintenance. We know that. It will have to be a little larger because of this. And we also expect that when we do that levy, we need to include a little bit of money in there for incremental development, so we don't put ourselves in this hole again. We're here because we haven't made these investments over the last 20, 40 years, and if we continue down this road, it's not going to be cheaper next year. It's not going to be cheaper in five years to dig ourselves out of this hole. The time to do this is now. It will affect our taxes $0 this year. Everybody will have a chance to adjust to the newer appraisals, which we all know are significant impact on people. And the impact next year will be much more measured than what the total dollar amount looks like. So we do think that we have been entirely transparent. The mayor, Cole, said this is the most transparent we've ever been on any type of bond or levy issuance in the past.
We talked about public safety. I think voters definitely passed that free and clear, because that seems to be a big issue in our community. You know, one of the things that our community is facing is jail capacity, and we talk a lot about a jail. Do we need to expand that jail? What do you say to residents who might be feeling that versus putting money into our parks, Tom?
Well, we hear that. We hear that every day. We personally can't solve that issue. We have to have, work with our partners at the county to solve that issue, the jail capacity, and they're going down that path. They're looking at a master plan for the jail, and then, as Jennifer knows, she's working very closely with them on that. So those are all good things. This is not an either/or. This is a both-and. We have to invest in all sides of our community, and the fact that we haven't been doing this for the last 20 or 40 years, we actually see manifested in some of our public safety issues, right? Public safety is not just about putting law enforcement on the street. It's about how we build our community so a generation from now, the kids that are growing up now are in the place to be safe and productive members of society. And Jennifer knows this very well, with her work pushing for the Nurse Family Partnership and other programs that really help get kids off to a good start. This parks bond plays into that. There are immediate impacts. When we start activating our parks and putting more programs and putting more features in those parks, they get more people. Their crime goes down. We heard Chief St. John testify to that, that putting people in parks and on trails causes crime in that area to go down. So there's near-term impacts there. There's near-term impacts of giving kids better things to do, more productive things to do with their time than just sit around idle or, you know, get into trouble, right? But there's, there are long-term impacts as well from parks and Nurse Family Partnership and all these kinds of different things that we're doing, actively seeking to try to improve public safety in the community for the long term.
Jennifer, that's true. I mean, Rich St. John, he did say that. He said crime goes down when we have open spaces, green spaces.
So as I was driving down here today, and in fact, right now, as we're doing this interview, about eight blocks from here, there is a multi-jurisdictional police presence in that neighborhood. There is clearly something very significant going on, and I'm quite certain that if we asked any of those neighbors if the most important thing on their mind was a trail, they would not say yes. People are very concerned about safety issues, and they're widespread throughout the community. I think it is a lack of leadership and vision that says the public safety issues are out of our hands and to blame it on the county commission. We need a multi-jurisdictional approach. My biggest concern is that in addition to not being truthful about the cost, we're not being truthful about our motivation. This is on the ballot this November because it's a race to the ballot box. We know there are other significant issues that will come to the voters, and this is just simply trying to skip the line. There is indication that building up our parks infrastructure can be a good preventative measure, but the overwhelming majority of this bond, this $200 million bond, is going to a single rec center, and there isn't the evidence that connects that. While I would love to see investment in our parks, and in fact, many of us on council tried to separate these so the voters could have a fair choice and discuss parks first and a rec center when it's ready, because it's not ready. We didn't get that chance to do that, unfortunately. I failed on a 6-5 vote. We could build our parks infrastructure and potentially have an impact on the public safety situation, but there are many near-term steps we need to take. In order for any of the parks in this community to see any benefit out of this $200 million levy, we're going to need to have every single thing go right. There's no wiggle room planned for these projects. So if the rec center, which right now is just at its master plan conceptual phase, has increased in costs, there's no money to make that up. So either the rec center or other projects get cut, which means the public didn't get what they were promised, or we're back to you for more taxes. In either case, the chance that these projects will all go exactly according to budget and that we won't have any disappointed neighbors feeling like their parks didn't happen is very low. So to mislead the public about what they might get and then put something in front of public safety, which is the overwhelming priority, to me just doesn't seem like good leadership. We can do better for our voters by taking time and being measured in our response. We should invest in our parks. It's a critical part of what people want in this community, but we have to make this a safe community first. I have had, in my ward in the Heights, drive-by shootings that jeopardized the life of an 11-month-old. I talked to a friend in Ward 1 whose business and home has been shot up more than five times in the past few months. These are real serious issues. So it's not that we don't have good projects. We do in our parks and recreation infrastructure. It's a question of prioritization and leadership, and right now, we need to make this the safest community in the state to raise a family.
I do want to address that, though, about the parks and the rec center. There are even people on the chamber that have said we should have, they would have rather separated them. Why are we not doing that? Would that not be a better sale for voters who are just looking at the price tag? You know, how do you fund parks and then also deal with people who are like, well, you're just funding a rec center? Either one of you can jump at it.
Yeah, so here's how that came about. When you're putting a package together like this, you have to, you have to get people to work together. You have to understand that different projects have different funding mechanisms. In the case of the rec center, we've got a suburban district that's chipping in $25 million out of that $110 million budget, and that goes down every year. We delay that. So the priority is there, the timeliness is there to make that happen. If we're looking at South Park Pool and the buildings down there, we shut South Park Pool down two weeks early last year because the equipment malfunction, or broke, right? We can't do that. We can't build a rec center and let South Park Pool fail. The Zimmerman Center and North Park Center are well beyond their useful life, and they're totally inadequate for what we have in terms of needs in those areas. So when we start putting these packages together, we look first at, you know, let's fix what we have, repair what we have. That's South Park, North Park, and the Zimmerman Center at Pioneer. Then let's finish what we've started. That's Castle Rock in the Heights, Centennial on the West End, and Poly Vista. And then, and then let's look for those opportunities or leverage those opportunities where non, where funds exist that are not new tax dollars. So the rec center, $25 million, $13 million worth of revenues after construction from naming rights and advertising and facility surcharges, right? Having those communities that are using that rec center for tournaments and events and leagues chip in extra to help build that cost out. Trails, we've got a $5.5 million Stagecoach Trail from the top of the Zimmerman Trail down to Rimrock Road. $4.7 million federal grant just sitting there waiting for us to come up with 800,000 matching funds, right? So some of these things have timeliness issues, and they're put together all in a way with those priorities that they all work together. And so, yes, lots of people would say, well, we would have liked to have two different votes. We put two different votes on the ballot. The most likely result is they both fail.
I mean, do you think that there's another time to pass this? I mean, say it doesn't go through. You have to go back to the drawing board. Obviously, we know, we need some, we need some work on our parks.
I think the challenge with the position that's just been stated is it's not true. That's not at all what happened. This was not a carefully crafted package. This was a politically crafted package. The proponents who are out there campaigning right now simply said, we won't campaign for you if you don't put them in together. They want a rec center, and many of us on council, in fact, I believe a majority, are most concerned about our parks infrastructure. But the people who are advocating for it said they wouldn't do it if they didn't get what they want, and unfortunately, six council members believed that that was true. So I think we should have put our parks first, and so the projects that have been articulated here that are time-sensitive should have gone first. Those could have been on the ballot this year, which with a much more responsible ask that I do believe voters would have supported. And in fact, I repeatedly indicated, I think that we owe the public a little trust-building activity. I think we need to show them. If you make a significant investment, we will deliver on that promise. One of my significant concerns is that we are not going to be able to deliver on this $200 million promise. So let's do the parks. Let's do those trails. Let's make those investments that are time-sensitive. Right now, the rec center needs more work. It needs architectural work. It needs design. It needs engineering. We need site work. There is a lot to be done, and that could have been happening behind the scenes while we made those very clear investments in the park and then come to the public with the capital investment after we've had a time to continue to prioritize public safety, adjust to the property tax valuations, and demonstrate to the public that we can execute on park development. We just didn't get that chance, and the only reason is politics.
Well, I think that's really interesting that Jennifer would have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on architectural diagrams and engineering before we even have the authorization to build the project, right? That's not a very good use of tax dollars. There's no way projects do that. We are exactly where we need for this, to be for these projects. We've got the master plan that says this is what the community needs, this is what the community supports, and this is the pro forma, the financial performance of this. We've got the T-bid that's stepped up to support the operations and maintenance of that facility, the deficit projected to be $500,000 to $600,000 a year. They've authorized up to $800,000. So we've put all the pieces into place. We've done the homework. We're exactly where we need to be, and this is the next step, is to get the authorization to build those projects.
So you are definitely, you are firm in the thinking that these two projects should go together on one ballot?
Everything works together as a whole. It's nice to say we should have done this or we should have done this, but in the reality, in the real world, we have multiple needs, and we have to address things across the community.
What do you say to people, Tom, that are not going to be able to use that rec center? Say somebody is going to vote for this, and they will use parks, but they're not going to be taking their kids there for hockey or whatever.
I pay for a lot of roads in the city that I don't use. I pay for police services and fire services that I personally have never used. These are community investments, and we all benefit from having them.
I mean, having a rec center in billings would bring in a lot of people. It really would. It would bring in a lot of money, economic ripple effect. But you don't think this is the time for it?
Again, I voted for the master plan on the rec center. I think the concept is really good. I foresee a billings that is a premier venue for particularly youth athletics, because that's something near and dear to my heart. But we've actually never done this before, and I think, again, it's important that we give voters all the facts. We've never asked them for such a large sum of money in which every single thing has to go exactly right. There's no fallback plan when that rec center that clearly has much more work to be done goes over budget. We are chronically dealing with overages on New City Hall, because that's just the way construction goes. We all know that. If we've ever done a home improvement project, things run over, and there's no slack here. So what happens when that rec center runs over budget? Because it's clearly the priority. What happens to all these other projects that have been promised when we run out of money? We continue to hear of all these promises, all these other sources of funds, and voters are simply being misled. The T-bid has not agreed to cover the operational deficit. They've agreed to cover what they can legally under law cover, which is advertising, marketing, and promotion. They cannot cover people to clean or maintain, so we still have an operating deficit that is unquantified and that we will be back to voters to cover in a few years. It's not that these projects aren't worthy. It's that some of them, like the rec center, are rushing to get ahead of other projects, and there are others where we need to consider contextually with everything that taxpayers are dealing with, what is the proper timing? I believe, and four other members of council believe as well, that parks should come first, and the rec center comes next when it's ready. That didn't happen, and I think it's unfortunate.
Well, once again, it's just not true. We have done projects actually bigger than this. Again, these school bonds, where we built two middle schools and then refurbished two elementary schools, in today's dollars would have been 10%, 15% larger than this, and they didn't have any room for error. If those had gone over, they would have been in the same position Jennifer is talking about. We deal with these things all the time. Projects go over, we use value engineering, we use rightsizing, we go out and find additional private dollars. That's exactly what we said we would do, and the council adopted resolution. So these are things that we have done in the past and we need to do now. There's this idea that we just can't do this is just a fetus, and I just don't know where it comes from.
Okay, I do want to ask you this. I mean, it's all about timing, right? And you've talked about that, and you're talking about how now is the time. For example, Missoula Fire has decided that they are going to take a levy that they wanted to throw out to voters and bring it back, because they do not feel like the timing is right with property taxes increasing. What do you think about that? I mean, do you, do you think that maybe this is not the right time to ask taxpayers to dig into their pockets in light of everything that's going on with property taxes and that big unknown right now? What do you guys think?
I certainly don't, and Missoula's not the only one. It's my understanding the city of Bozeman canceled a levy, a planned levy as well for the same reason. People are reeling right now. In our community, we are reeling not just from property tax valuation, but from the chronic plague of public safety, and we have to be serious about it. Imagine what would happen to the safety and vibrancy of our community if we invested $10 to $12 million a year for 20 years in public safety. So it's a question of timing, both in terms of what people are dealing with now and into the future. Betting that inflation's going to go down right now probably isn't a very good bet. We know there are economic challenges that taxpayers are facing. But it's also a question of what are the other priorities that need to remain at the front of the line, and what we hear from all of our constituents is public safety first. So yes, there's a property tax impact, but there's also a prioritization that demands leadership.
Well, Bozeman and Missoula both had about double of our appraisal increases, so they're not really the same, and the uncertainty there, I think, is much greater. Bozeman has had much more recent investments in their parks and trails area, right? They just passed a large park district just a couple of years ago, so they've had recent investment in this area.
And a big justice center.
And a big justice center, right? Missoula is an interesting political situation. Almost seems as much like a political ploy as anything else. So I think comparing us to them, when we haven't had investment in this area, and we haven't even asked the voters in 25 years, it's just, it's just not the same thing. It's not comparable.
Let's just be honest. We are in some of our, I mean, and you're on board with this, but we are in some of our parks, and there are some problems in some of these parks. I mean, right, a park says so much about its community. It literally says it's safe to be in a park, and we have shootings. We have stabbings. We have all of these things, not to mention just the facilities themselves. Tom, what do you say to voters that maybe don't frequent these parks, maybe because they don't feel safe going to them? This would help solve that, right?
Absolutely, and you should take a look at what's going on in North Park right now. We are, this year, putting in new playground equipment. We are resurfacing the basketball and tennis courts next year, I believe. We're starting to work on a dog park and a first-beat golf course. Talk to Michelle Harkins at the E-Bird about how they're leading that effort. And lighting in the park. Rebuilding that community center there so they can actually be a true hub and support the type of programming and activity that that park needs will create much more activity in the park, and it's going to be one of the most dynamic parks in the city when all these things come to play. So absolutely, it will improve the safety in that park, and everybody will love coming there.
Do you know, is there research that backs that up? Is there research that says, or is there data somewhere that says when a park like that, like North Park, for example, is improved, the crime goes up?
Absolutely, and not only does it improve in the park, but it improves for four or five blocks surrounding the park. So the ability to make a park more active and well-maintained and dynamically programmed throughout the day and throughout the year improves, improves safety hands down.
Okay. Jennifer, if you, if you, I don't, are you for it or are you not for it, I guess, just so I'm clear?
The proposal that's on the ballot, I will not be voting for it.
Okay. Is there anything that would make it so that you are for it? What could you change to make it for?
Sure, there were a couple of things that we had asked for that unfortunately didn't happen, and they really speak exactly to what Tom is talking about, because the investments in the park, like I said, they may have an ancillary benefit on public safety, but only if they happen. In 2021, my council member mate for the Heights, Roy Neese, did about a $950,000 budget amendment to fund a renovation of the parking lot and bathrooms at Castle Rock Park, which are really in pretty bad disrepair. The Parks Department came back and said the very best they could do was pave a parking lot for over $1 million. So again, we're talking about a proposal where every single project, in order for the public to get what they're being promised, has to happen on or under budget, but our history has not been that case. And so what would have made me feel better is if we made the parks go first. Now, I understand that for political reasons, people want to jumble that rec center in there, but we had, in this resolution that Tom talks about, discussed saying parks first. We're going to build them, and then as the rec center develops, then we will build it. And that, too, was rejected. We had asked, actually, council member Rupsis had suggested that every project have a community group, a neighborhood group that stewards it, and our own city administration said that would be far too difficult for them to manage. So when we talk about transparency and oversight to protect those promised investments in the park, every chance we've had to actually do that has been summarily rejected, which raises my concern that what this is really about is getting a rec center built, and getting a rec center built almost entirely at taxpayer expense and promising them parks that have very little chance of happening.
Well, that's, hold up, hold up. We have to address some of that, because that is totally inaccurate. Not only does the resolution that we passed include those steering, community steering committees, every park will have one of those, and you know it is, and I've got the resolution right here, so don't even question that. It's, the community steering committees are in there. We said that the rec center construction could not begin before the first set of parks projects were in there. That's in here, and it was at Jennifer's insistence. And even her representation of what's going on at Castle Rock Park is wrong. So I'm not even sure where this is coming from.
It is not wrong. It is absolutely the truth.
I absolutely talked to Mike Pig just about this just the other day. So, you know, it's, I'm not really sure where this is coming from. Jennifer sent me six pages of comments on making this resolution better, and almost every one of them is in there. And so the idea that somehow her ideas couldn't get there, we didn't, you know, put this resolution together in a transparent way that's actually getting the community involved and being upfront with what we're doing on this bond is just ludicrous. I'm not even sure where it's coming from.
You yourself said that inflation was probably not going to go anywhere. So is not, I mean, now is the time? If you're going to keep construction costs down, is now not the time?
If the community believes that we need to do a project, I mean, we will always have to battle net present value of dollars, right? Whether we do road projects or parks projects or any of those sort of things, that's the nature of construction. But what, I really do want to address this, because, again, people are not being told the truth. The oversight mechanisms aren't in there, and the resolution very clearly states that dollars can move between projects. And so that's the concern here, is that we are trying to build a rec center, and we are promising people some other things. So I think if we had addressed the construction projects that impact the broadest part of the community first, then we would have gotten the most value and shown the public what we were going to do.
I think it would be great if Jennifer actually read the resolution.
Will we not see costs adjust as time goes on and costs for construction increase?
Of course they will, and-
Will you have to go back to voters for-
Absolutely. No, no. The budgets are set what they're set, and it's actually set in the resolution. Every project was based on a master plan for that park, and when the master plan was done and the estimates were gathered at that point, and using inflation going forward done and the estimates were gathered at that point, and using inflation going forward so that we had a current estimate of what that, that park construction would be. The master plan for the rec center assumed that it would be built in about three years and had that inflation factor built in. We were told this in public meetings in council. So the idea that we haven't thought this through is absurd. We've sat there, we've listened to this, and if Jennifer isn't understanding it, she's just not listening to the public information that's available.
Okay. I, I do want to, we've got a couple more minutes, and I just want to close this out. So I, I just want to ask each of you this. One, your constituents, the place that you live, the things that people can afford these days, it, it, is this, like, Tom, we'll start with you. Is this where, all right, first of all, do you think voters are going to approve this? Do you in your hearts think that voters are going to really approve this in the state of the economy, in a world of inflation, childcare, wages, every healthcare, everything that we think about in our lives?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I absolutely do. And, and I hear more and more evidence of that every day. People are reaching out, and I'm talking to more and more people, from neighbors to, to community leaders, business leaders, what have you. They're all saying, we need this in Billings. It's long past time that we've had the choice to even vote on these types of projects. We need a rec center here. It's embarrassing when we go to other cities and they, they're half our size and they have better facilities than we do. We need to make these investments in our community. They're not getting cheaper. We've done the homework. We've got 38 out of $110 million on the rec center. That is not new taxpayer dollars, right? We have done the work to put this package together, and, and I want to read this quote from, from Mayor Cole, and, and it's, it's, it's a list, so I gotta have it right down. But he says, "This proposal is the most detailed, thought-out, revised, transparent, financially realistic, publicly vetted, privately funded, and comprehensive proposal for recreation facilities that Billings has ever seen and that Billings is likely to see in the near future."